Okay, we'll get started. Thank you for those that have come out tonight to be informed of what happens in our board meetings. So, we met earlier in a study session, had some good conversations about some items, and we have reconvened now for a public hearing to address the board, to address, to address the school board compensation schedule. And so if you, and we'll open up the time now for any public comment. If you have a comment, come up to the mic, state your name and address, so we know what district you're from, and please limit your comments to two minutes. As a board, we may or may not comment, but we'll take as many comments as we need to and take as much time, so. Time is now yours for any that want to.
So I'm Michelle Smith. I live at nineteen West four.
Excuse me.
Oh, we gotta do the pledge.
No, we're not, this is not, we're not in a regular board meeting, we're just in a public comment.
Okay.
So, but I'm gonna ask Superintendent or Business Administrator, Jason Watt, to kinda, kinda go over what we're proposing before we start our public comment.
Yeah, thank you. So, if you can, you know, think back to what your life was like in the nineteen eighties, or maybe sooner, we're not really sure, that has been at least as long as it's been since the Wasatch County School District Board of Education has considered an increase for compensation for their services. As, as, when we kinda wanna know the history of such things, and the board asks us to look into, like, when it was, we can't find a record that, that shows what it was. We know, by looking at our local historian Keith Johansson, who's in the audience, that it was at least thirty years ago, because that's how many years he's been around or can, and can remember. And so, the board has asked that we prepare a proposal for them to consider as a way to get themselves into the, into a more modern compensation schedule. The board currently receives two hundred and fifty dollars per month for compensation for their, their, their time, and they put in significant time, not only in meetings here, but in committee assignments and meetings, in state-level assignments, and, and, and working with constituents and other district committees. It's a significant amount of time. They receive two hundred and fifty dollars a month for that, and one hundred dollars a month for travel stipend, totaling three hundred and fifty dollars a month, which is as low as anybody in, in, in the state. And so in an effort to keep them more similar to other school districts and also other political entities in our community, we are proposing for the board to consider an increase in their stipend to eleven hundred and fifty dollars per month. In addition to that, board leadership for their roles as president and vice president would receive an additional one hundred and fifty dollars per month. Also, board members on significant committee and state assignments, such as the USBA Board of Directors, or other similar type assignments, as approved by the board, would receive an additional one hundred and fifty dollars per month for their services. As is the case now, the district, all, the board members also receive a funded insurance plan for them and their, their family. And in keeping with how we treat all district employees, board members who have double coverage, who would like to opt out of group health insurance, would receive an amount equal to the annual cost of a single premium of group insurance to a health reimbursement account that would be available to them upon separation from the school district. The total value of that currently is eighty-four hundred dollars, eighty-four eighty-four is the total of, of value of that right now. The last thing on the proposed compensation schedule would be similar to any district employee where they would be able to be reimbursed, be reimbursed for travel expenses as, as we would do with any school district employee on, on school business. So that is the proposal, and I'll turn the time back over to you, Vice President.
Thank you. Thanks for, thank you for that explanation. I will now open it up to any public comment, so. Again, please come to the mic if you'd like to speak, state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
You wanna erase me? I'm Michelle Smith. I live in Camas, nineteen West four hundred South. School boards have an intimate role. Nearly every facet, school boards have an intimate role in nearly every facet of school, even though they may seem only distantly connected to the day-to-day operations. I've come to appreciate and understand your challenging and essential role to students, staff, and community. I can't think of a single element of my day-to-day life as a teacher that does not tie back to the work of our school board. I stand before you today as the representative of the teachers of the Wasatch County School District with heartfelt gratitude for our incre, for our incredible school board members. Your dedication and tireless efforts shape the very essence of our educational community. To the unsung heroes behind our success, thank you. Your passion for creating an environment where teaching and learning thrive does not go unnoticed. Your support is a guiding light to us as educators, and your commitment to the well-being of our students is truly inspiring. As a teacher, I am privileged to be, privileged to be part of a district led by individuals who not only prioritize education, but also embrace the unique journey of each student. Your personal touch, advocacy, and vision for excellence are driving forces that make our school community exceptional. Your personal commitment and vision leave an indelible, indelible mark on our hearts. Thank you for making our shared educational journey one of collaboration, growth, and unwavering support.
Thank you so much.
My name is Keith Johansson, and I live in Corey's Precinct on Mill Road, five fifty North. And as Jason mentioned earlier, I've, I've been here a long time as the business administrator until this past fall. And I know that in that amount of time, that the, the topic of compensation for the school board has come up occasionally, but nothing's ever been done about it. It's, it's not the easiest thing to do. It's a little bit awkward, and, and I was thinking on the way over that, you know, the legislature, they can give themselves a raise, and, and it's done before anybody even knows it's happened. The same with, you know, Congress, they'll give themselves a raise and, and it's done. School boards have to have a public hearing, and that's not the most convenient thing to do. I'm proud of you for doing it. You deserve it. I've worked with a lot of school boards over the years, a lot of wonderful school board members, and you guys are tops, and, and everything that you do is for the benefit of, of the children of this county. And that's your one and only goal. And I know that you haven't been doing it for the money, because it's not much, considering the amount of time that you put in. And considering, you know, the, the role of a, the duties of a school board member have gotten a lot harder, I think, in the twenty-eight years that I was the business administrator. You, you have to sit there and take potshots from people on social media that are from a very safe distance, and you have to take that, and, and it's not easy. And anyway, I, I just wanna say I, I fully support the, the idea of, of this compensation package for the school board. And with that, I need to leave, 'cause I'm babysitting a ten, ten, eight, and five-year-old down in Lehigh, and so I, I got my youngest daughter to take him for a couple hours while I drove up to, to do this. But again, it's, you're a wonderful school board, and you do so much for the children of the valley, and you deserve this raise, if you can call it that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Stacy, anything online? Okay, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Okay, we will now start our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Wanna point out first, our President Tom Hanson is not with us tonight. He has to be excused. We thought he was gonna be able to, to be on the call with us, but he's got things that have come up, so he is not here, so. He will not participate in this meeting. We'll start by having a pledge of allegiance, and Kim, would you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and you will now open up for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to make a comment on anything else other than the compensation, feel free to come to the mic. Again, state your name, address, and you have two minutes. Garrick, would you like to come up? Quiet group tonight, and that's fine, so. Okay, we'll close the public comment and move on. So you've all looked at the consent items. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any conversation or anything we need to talk about there? Okay. Motion passes. Okay, we'll start into our action items and turn the time over to Jason Watt to introduce our next topic.
Okay, we have here with us Paul Skeen and Sean Kentady from I D Bailey, and they are the company that we have contracted with to perform an audit of the school district's finances. We spent a lot of quality time together, especially with Sean, who was on-site for a lot of the, the audit. The audit is an extensive process, and, and I'm sure that part of their presentation will get into some of that, but they are here to, to present to the board the findings.
Okay, thanks, Jason. I, last year when we were up here, it was with a little bit of emotion. When I drove off, I'm like, oh, this is my last board meeting with Keith, and then he shows up. It's like, it's like Christmas in January. It was exciting, so. It's, it's nice to, to see him. I'll make some overall comments. I'm Paul Skeen. I'm the partner on the engagement. Sean is, is the manager, so what happens is he does all the work and I take credit for it. And so I thought he oughta come and take credit for some of this himself this year, so. Appreciate the opportunity to be up here. Just globally, our audit, the way we approach our audits is a risk-based approach. We don't look at every single invoice, every single penny, but we look globally at the entity, and try and decide the areas that need the most attention and design a program. Year to year, it changes every year on what presents the most risk. I know that risk discussions are super exciting, almost as exciting as financial statements, but the reason I bring that up is, one of the risks that we identify in any entity is when there's a major change of management. You've had, basically, the, the person at the podium before us was an institution and has been a part of it for a long time and knows every nook and cranny of the finances of, of the school district, and so shifting that responsibility to, to new people that are certainly capable but not having the level of experience changes our approach in the way that we audit things. So if Jason felt special this year, you are, and you were, but did an absolutely remarkable job. And in that transition, we couldn't, it's not like we just took anything for granted. We dug in and looked at things that could be susceptible to, to change, and the team did a fantastic job. Now Keith was here to, to consult, and I know that he made himself available, but we couldn't be happier with that kind of transition happening as effectively as it did. So kudos to Jason and, and to Wes and, and their efforts to keep this thing rolling. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about some of our required communications and then our main audit report. And then Sean will talk about some of the special reports that we do related to internal control and compliance. We are required, as I mentioned, to, to address risks. One of the risks that we identify in planning in any organization of this size is the ability for management, whether it's the superintendent, the business administrator, program administrators, to override controls and do something outside of the, the planned control system. And so we, we take a different approach with a, an entity this size than we would, say, we don't audit Ford Motor Company, but if we were dealing with a multinational organization, and feel like the control structure is appropriate and operating well to make sure that the assets are protected of the school district. A few things that I just wanna confirm, we are independent of the school district and the personnel that, that are over the financial reporting process. In going through, even with the change, there were no significant difficulties that we encountered. Part of the audit is, as we go through, oftentimes we have adjustments that we, we propose, that if we didn't make those adjustments, the financial statements would be materially misstated. We did not have any of those types of entries. Another lesser entry would be what we call an uncorrected misstatement, that it's not of the significance that it would cause the financials to be misstated, but it is a difference in what we thought the number should be. In that case, we would present those to you to make sure that our judgment and Jason's judgment weren't off on those amounts, but we didn't have any uncorrected misstatements either. That, that's exceptional. We had no disagreements with management, and all in all, things went extremely well. Now, I think you have, I have to, I've got two sets of eyes here. So the financial statements, if you could go down to page three, right there. So of the, the sixty-four pages that are here, I don't intend to cover more than two of them. Two or three belong to us. The rest belong to management. So our responsibility as auditors is to design and implement and execute an audit that allows us to say the financial statements are materially correct. And I, I won't bore you with all the form, and you're welcome to, sometime when you're sleepless, to dig in and read this to your heart's content. But the, the summary of this audit report is that it's a clean opinion. There were no modifications to it, that we, we believe the financial statements, the numbers, and the disclosures are appropriate in form, content, and amount. So that's the cleanest opinion that we can give, and with that, I'll turn it over to Sean to talk about some of the compliance and internal control reports that we issue as well.
Okay, so if we can start with the independent audits report, that's probably a mouthful. But on page one of the supplemental report, that's the one there. If we can go down maybe a couple of pages, maybe just one page, that'd be page, there we go. So the purpose of this report here is for us to really discuss the, a report on the company's or the district's internal control environment. As Paul mentioned, we, as we're designing our audit procedures, we do want to consider the district's internal control environment just to determine which procedures would be most effective in performing our audit. And while we do consider the internal control environment, we do not express an opinion on an internal control environment. And in addition to that, we did kinda wanna highlight just the potential, I guess, any deficiencies in internal controls. Essentially, while there weren't any that we discovered, any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we did kinda want to discuss the overall nature of any type of deficiencies that might be within the environment. And those are some of the procedures that we do to at least consider those, so we would perform walkthroughs for account reconciliations that might, might have been done by the staff here at the district. But as we mentioned, there weren't any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we identified after performing our procedures. So if we can move on to the second page of this report. This would be one page down, I'm sorry. So in this section here, the report on compliance and other matters, as a part of obtaining reasonable but not absolute assurance, you know, we aren't testing everything at a hundred percent. We do test the district's compliance with contracts, with grants that have been awarded during the period in order to, again, to express our clean opinion, our unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And in connection with these procedures performed, we did not discover any instances of noncompliance with, with any of the awards that were granted during the year. So that's always great news. But overall, again, the purpose of this report here is just to let the district know that, hey, we do consider the district's internal control environment, and we do also consider compliance with grant awards and agreements of that nature. So if you move on to the next page. This report here, just overall, again, kinda discusses our approach to the district's compliance with the the major federal programs that we audited as far as the CIFA is concerned. So on the very last page, on page nine of this report, we do, maybe wanna go down one more page from here. I'm sorry. So that would maybe one more page. I'm so sorry.
Let's have a difference in PDF numbering and the numbering.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the PDF numbering rather than the, the presentation up there. But at the bottom of this page, we do identify the, the two federal, the three federal programs that were subject to audit this year. So there was the Education Stabilization Fund, the Special Education Cluster, and Title I. So these three programs, again, were subject to our audit procedures. And with these specific programs, we are issuing, again, a nonmodified and clean opinion. We didn't notice any noncompliance with any of the compliance requirements that are set forth by the compliance supplement. And in addition to that, we really consider the basis of our opinion based on the audit standards that are issued by the United States of America. And again, we kinda just do stellar procedures. We worked closely with Jason this year, and we really got into the weeds with, with Wes Lebingham as well, as far as, again, just making sure that the district is compliant with all these programs. And again, we issued a clean opinion for all three of these programs here.
Can I make one comment on the, the programs? You can see them on the, the screen there. That's the Education Stabilization Fund is, is the COVID funds. We're required to rotate those programs each year. We can select it back-to-back years, but none of the programs above seven hundred and fifty thousand in expenditures will go more than three years without being audited. So, and in this case, we usually rotate child nutrition through as well, and then some combination of these other ones. So there is a rotation schedule that we follow on those.
Thanks, Paul. So with this, with these specific audits that we do, managing, again, is responsible for the compliance with each of these three programs that have been audited. And then us as auditors, we are just to come in to exercise judgment, to exercise professional skepticism, identify any areas of noncompliance, that, at least any areas within the programs that might be risky or subject to noncompliance. In addition to that, we do also take into consideration some of the internal controls that are in place for these specific programs here at the district. So moving on from here onto the page five of the reports, I should say, so, let's see. Okay, so that is, looks like maybe a different report here.
I think go back to the supplemental one, Stacy. And so go to page seven on yours.
Again, and again, so with these federal programs that we do audit, we do take into consideration, again, the internal control environment. As was the case with the financial statements, we do identify whether there's a significant deficiency or material weakness, kind of a similar concept where we are assessing the magnitude of any noncompliance for any of these programs. However, unfortunately, with a, these programs we audited, we did not notice any issues of noncompliance, so again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report here to the board. Lastly, we did review and audit, while we did audit the financial statements that are presented, we also did take a look at the actual schedule of a federal awards that was presented, and as a result of that, we are issuing a clean opinion on the CIFA as well. And so I think that is it for this report, so we can probably move on to our state compliance report, which would be on, excuse me, here. It could be on page nine, page nine, or. Yes, this one here. So with our state compliance procedures, we take a look at several, several areas, such as budgetary compliance, fund balance, restricted taxes, cash management. We just kinda take a look at each of these areas and perform, again, specific procedures to ensure there is no noncompliance with each of these areas.
And these procedures are dictated to us by the state auditor. So they've gone through the, the legal compliance required in the state of Utah, and they have a guide that's very specific in what we test and how we test it.
In addition, or in connection with performing our procedures, with those requirements, again, we're issuing another clean opinion with the state requirement, at least as far as the district complying with the state, state compliance standards. Again, as Paul mentioned, we, the basis of our opinion is these audit standards, the government audit standards as well, and standards issued by the, the comptroller as well. And so again, moving on to the next page, you kinda again, get into our responsibilities of management as far as remaining compliant with these, with these areas. And again, us as auditors are coming in and exercising that professional skepticism and that professional judgment, and again, assessing the district's internal control environment as we're performing our procedures. So I think that essentially covers most of these reports. They're all pretty similar in nature, but the good news is clean opinions all around, and things are looking great.
Any questions for either of us?
I think the only thing I wanna say is thank you to Jason and his, and his team working with you. I know there are a lot of audits that school districts have to go through, so we appreciate you working with us and Jason for all your, you and your team have done.
Well, I mean, obviously, this is still ninety-nine percent Keith on this one. I'll feel a lot better when I get to this point next year and we get that sort of, sort of report. But the good news for you is I have a hard copy for you of both of these audits that you can take home.
Well, and just that we thank you for your integrity, and, and we trust you, and we trust that everything will will continue the way it has been.
Thank you.
And thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate our relationship that, that we've, that we've enjoyed with you over the years, and, and you've always done a great job, and, and we appreciate what you've done again for us this year. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we look forward to giving that report again next year as well, Jason.
Awesome.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jason, what are you asking us to approve?
Um, I'm asking you to approve then, the, and these are on our website for the community to see as well, the audit results.
For twenty twenty-three?
Twenty, basically of twenty-three, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the audit results from fiscal year twenty-three as outlined tonight.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Watt, you're up again.
So for this item, um, we have discussed in study session and also presented before the public hearing, a board compensation schedule, um, that we would recommend that the board approve to uh, um, to give the board a, a, a raise for their services that has been long overdue.
I'll make a motion to approve the school board compensation schedule.
Have a second?
I got a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any comments?
I would just, if people are wanting an in-depth, detailed discussion, our study session, I think, was really good. And, you know, we're trying to look at what other entities are doing. And we haven't had a raise for thirty years, so we need to get us in line with other county entities as well.
I, I think right now I'm the, would be the senior board member tonight because President Hanson isn't here, but I first heard of this about five years ago. Uh, it was mentioned, and I didn't think anything of it. I heard it again a couple of years ago. I want you to know, it's not like we've ever said as a board and said, hey, we need a raise, you know, we're pretty special, we need more money. That's never happened. Um, and Keith was big behind this and said it needs to happen, and kinda threw that at, at Jason and Paul and said this needs to happen. So um, it's not us pounding the table saying we need a raise, it came from somewhere else, and, but I'm uh, I'm appreciative and grateful, so.
And I'm gonna bet that it hasn't happened, because I know at least in the last three years, when it got brought up, we're, it's, it's not something we wanna stand up here, sit up here and do. And we just continue on the way it is, and, but after much discussion, I, I think we need to realize our own value to this district, and we value the district, we, we value the superintendent, and Jason Watt, and everyone, directors and teachers and all students, and it, it's hard for us to say, yeah, we're, we're worth this. So it's really, really hard. So this, this was a hard thing to do.
Well, and I'd just maybe add that this board has been um, pioneering and res- and, and resolute on ensuring that the salaries of the educators in this district are um, are such that we can attract and retain the best teachers, and it's time for the, the board compensation to sort of match, match what you've done for educators here.
Thank you.
We're very, we're very grateful to the board, and I, I think the, the teachers, Mrs. Smith that represented the Teachers Association, um, speaks volumes to um, how the teachers feel about our school board, and, and I can assure you, that's, that's, that's not only rooted in teacher compensation, but the way they, they feel like they're treated, um, how the board has let out in, in several different areas, um, including achievement. Um, we know we got our first number one. We, we finished, we finished at the top of the state in language arts as a district this year. Um, and uh, the board was instrumental in, in helping us achieve that goal and supporting those things that had to happen for, for, uh, for that to take place. And uh, so this is definitely the right thing to do. Um, I think our uh, over one thousand employees in this district is, is behind it a hundred percent. It's, it's really long overdue, and, and uh, we just, as a, as a superintendent, I wanna just be on the record that uh, that you didn't ask for this, that this, uh, this came from, from staff, and, and we give Keith a, um, we appreciate Keith's recommendation on the way out the, the door, and uh, this is the right thing to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three, Dr. Campbell, enlighten us.
Well, I'm grateful to be here tonight, 'cause normally I'm asking you to add something to our policy manual, and tonight's one of those rare occasions where I get to ask you to prune a little bit. And I think it's appropriate, if I could just take a second, that we're asking to retire policy one oh four, which is the resolution committing to keep Wasatch School District um, learning in person during the COVID nineteen. I think there's no greater example of um, what you guys have to deal with on a day-to-day basis than what you dealt with during COVID nineteen. And it was because of your leadership that, and I know Superintendent Swett's mentioned this a couple of times, that our Wasatch County School District was found unique in the nation in a study done um, led by Harvard University and Stanford University on looking at the effects of COVID nineteen on student achievement. And Wasatch County was, I believe, one of, only a couple in the nation that actually um, posted gains in both mathematics and language arts. And I think actually we were the only ones to do it in both areas, but there were a few districts that did it in either math or language arts. So um, at this time, we are asking to retire this policy, and we hope we never, ever have to resurrect such a policy ever again.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four. This is a fun night for many of us in the family, and I'll turn the time over to Superintendent to tell us what's going on there.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I appreciate that. It is a fun night. It's an exciting, uh, it's an exciting part of our, our meeting tonight. And as many, as many of you know, um, I have a long history in Wasatch County School District, and my, my favorite quote is to, when people ask me when I started here, is to say in kindergarten. That's when I started with this district. And, and uh, I like some of the guys here sitting shoulder to shoulder with me. I, I went to high school, Wasatch High School in the eighties, and Mr. Kelly as well, and, and Corey's wife Marcia's with us tonight, and, and uh, um, you know, we were, we were all there. And uh, um, I, I was, I had the, the, the privilege of working with and being a student underneath some remarkable people at Wasatch High back in, back in the eighties. And uh, it's a, it, those were some, those were some times that, that are very fond, uh, that I'm very fond of, and, and some great memories. And I so appreciate the great educators um, that, that led that school. And, and you know, the faculty at Wasatch High, when I first got there, they all fit in one little tiny faculty room. And uh, it was a little different place. And, and speaking of coaches, um, which we're about to, to address, uh, coaches were harder to come by back in those days. And even, even in my early years as the athletic director at Wasatch High School in the uh, in the two thousands, I remember an era, when I first got there, we didn't open assistant coaches' jobs. We twisted arms, and we, we, we really asked people to come and help and, and be a part of it, 'cause the, the community wasn't that big, and, and there weren't just a, a whole lot of people sitting around, um, you know, waiting to apply for a coaching job at, at the high school. But um, one of those, one of those great men that, that, that we're going to talk about is, is, is the late Verl Tully. And uh, um, a man that was a, was a giant at Wasatch High School from the, from the sixties to the nineties. And uh, we're so honored to have some of his family here tonight. His beloved wife Colleen is with us. Um, will you just raise your hand, Colleen, and we can, let's give her a round of applause. We're also, we're also honored to have uh, two of Verl's daughters with us, Janice and Wendy, and uh, their, some of their loved ones, and, and uh, um, Janice, remind me your, your daughter's name.
Allison.
Allison. Allison, thank you for being here, one of, one of Verl's granddaughters. And, and uh, um, I just, I just wanna let the family know, and I wanna, I wanna let the public know that uh, um, there's few people, there's, there's few people that had the same effect, or the, the, the great effect that Verl Tully did on hundreds and hundreds of students um, in this valley and at Wasatch High School back in the eighties. So I'm just gonna share a couple of, couple of facts. I did hear from, I think it came from the family, and it got back to me, that, that Verl coached pretty much everything, um, except for maybe football. Did I, did I get that correctly?
Except for wrestling.
Except for wrestling, including football, except for wrestling. Thank you.
The assistant to Dan.
Assistant to Dan Wright.
In those days, there were two coaches. One would be the head, one the assistant. In the other was the head and the assistant.
Excellent. And uh, and a, a, as I mentioned, um, that's how it had to be. A few guys did a, a lot of the coaching in those days. There, there weren't people knocking down the door to come in and, and be and have the, have the, these great staffs that we had. They, they did all three. Most, most of our coaches coached three sports, and, and some more than that, and they helped each other, and they all worked together. And uh, as, as I mentioned, uh, Tyler and, and Cory and Sean would remember these days well at, at Wasatch High. So let me just give you a few, a few facts. And we uh, once, I'll have a few more comments once the board, the board uh, takes their vote on this, on this important um, initiative tonight. But let me just share some facts with you. I looked it up before the meeting, and in the sport of, in the sport of girls' track and field, Verl Tully won six state championships. And if you look on the, if you look in the record book at the Utah High School Activities um, Handbook, that is number six all time of number of state championships won in girls' track. So of all the, of all the men and women that have coached girls' track in the state of Utah, um, number of state championships, Verl Tully is number six. That's, that's remarkable. That's a remarkable um, feat. And then the, the next thing I wanna mention is that he won a girls' basketball state championship in nineteen eighty-three. That would have been, that would have been, I think Sean and I would have been at the high school, and Corey, and, and you may have been just almost getting there, um, in those days, and, and, and Marcia, of course. Um, and I don't know, we, we'll, we'll do a little more research on this for some of our future ceremonies. I can't think of another coach at Wasatch that won championships in two different sports. I think, I think he might be the only one, but we will, we will check that out, and we will have that uh, moving forward. But um, I believe Verl coached a lot of, of cross-country and so on. And, and then the other thing I wanna mention is behind, behind wrestling, our, our wrestling dynasty that we have, um, number of state championships, and, and the next sport that, that comes in second is girls' track and field, uh, with seven championships, with six of those championships being won with Verl as the coach. And I think that, we'll do the, we'll do the math on this as well, but for a, for a, a number of single championships for coaches, I'm gonna guess that he's, he's right there at, at the top or in the top two or three, and we'll, we'll get, we'll make sure we find those things out for sure. So, so, you know, we talked, we, outstanding achievement, outstanding number of championships, um, really a, a, a dynasty in girls' track and field and, and, and girls' cross-country during my years at the, at the high school. Uh, but beyond that, just, just the great man that Verl was, and the kind and gentleman that he was. And he expected a lot. You don't win that many ch- state championships without having remarkable, high expectations, and a, and a talent to motivate students. With that being said, Verl was one of the most kind and gentle teachers and coaches and, and men that I, that I ever associated with. And I, I think that's a real testament that he was, that he accomplished so much in, in the, in the kind and loving way that he went about it. So I'm gonna stop there for now. Can I point out just one other thing? You betcha. Go right ahead. I, I, you know, not only had Verl as a coach and a, and a teacher, but I, I got to know Verl a little bit more later in life, aft- after the significant injuries that, that Verl went through. I, I had the opportunity to work with him as his, as his physical therapist. And what, what, what was so amazing about the guy i- is that he continued to exhibit fit- fitness all the way to his dying day. You, you would see him run around this town every dang day. Um, and, and so, so not, not only was he a great, a great man educator, but the, the guy embraced fitness. He lived it. He passed that down to, to you as kids. Uh, just, just an amazing example in so many ways. So, so what we're doing here tonight, I think, is very, very fitting for you and the family, and, and, and wanna publicly tell you thank you for giving him to us, so. If there, if there are no further comments, um, Corey, if we wanna go ahead and, and entertain a vote, then maybe I'll have a couple of other things to say afterwards.
I'm not sure that you've asked us what we're voting on.
I'm sorry, I, I did all of that, and I, I maybe should've, I maybe should've started with it. But this, this is the, this is the deal. Um, I'm, I might, I may be just a little flustered, and I, when I start talking about um, the eighties at Wasatch High School, I mean, I get a little emotional, so. Um, we have a, a football stadium at Wasatch High, and I think everybody knows that, that two other great men that, that were, that were very close friends of Verl Tully's and, and colleagues, um, Dan Wright and Ron Tree, um, their name is on the football stadium. We affectionately call that place Wright Tree Stadium. And the proposal tonight, and this, this proposal um, um, came to us um, from the Tully family, and Corey was their school board representative and, and the right guy um, to, to bring this to, to us here at the district, and it was just a no-brainer from the second we heard about it. Um, and that is to name the track at Wright Tree Stadium. And, and we'll decide exactly the semantics of it, but, but the Verl Tully Track, what will affectionately be known moving forward, once this vote is taken, as the Tully Track at Wright Tree Stadium.
I'll entertain a motion.
So let's see, motion to approve the naming of the Wasatch High School Track to Tully Track.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. It's a good night. Um, I was excited to see this on our agenda tonight, and, and knew that we would unanimously vote yes for it. So glad that you approached me a while ago about this, and that we were able to get this done, and we look forward to future uh, celebrations, as we have some events to unveil this to the community. So, good night.
Let's uh, just as a heads up, moving forward, we will uh, and Janice and I have talked about this uh, at length, and, and uh, we, we plan on two events. The first event would be the actual naming ceremony, and we'll do that sometime that it works well for the family and, and for the school district at one of the early track meets in the, in the spring, um, in the spring of twenty-four, this coming spring. And then we'll have a follow-up event um, at a halftime, preferably if we can, if we can work it out, um, at Homecoming or one of the other home football games in the, in the fall, when we have, when we'll have a, a, a much larger audience. And uh, we'll, we'll do that again, and make sure that we have um, family there and, and a, and a, and again, go over this, this, this great honor. And, and I just, I just, my, my closing remarks would be that, um, you know, tonight, when I, when I go home and, and, and cash in for the day, the thought of having um, Ron Tree, Dan Wright, and Verl Tully's name on Wasatch High Stadium, um, I'm gonna go to sleep very happy tonight. So thank you for uh, working with us, and we look forward to these other two celebrations, and, and uh, this is a, this is a great night for, for Wasatch High School and the Tully family.
I think we should get a picture of the family. If Kersa can get a picture, maybe with the superintendent.
Do we wanna have them s- say anything? We do. We, um, actually, I'm sorry. I'm really flustered tonight. I'm sorry. We'd love to hear from you. Um, we talked about, I know, I know Janice- Um, we talked about, I know, I know Janice is planning on sharing some words and anyone else that would like to can as well. So come on up to the podium, Janice. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks for reminding him. I was hoping you'd forget. First of all, thank you on behalf of our family. This is a, a really great honor. And we're, we're very thankful for that. Just ironically, as a side note, my mom taught at North School, at this school in kindergarten. This, we are sitting in her classroom. This is her classroom. And that picture right there is her classroom. It was painted by Robert Duncan. Those are the kids that my mom taught. So that's pretty cool that we get to be here. So mom and dad moved here in nineteen sixty-four. And dad became the football coach. And that's where he started out. What? Oh, basketball. Sorry. See, I don't even know.
He did so much.
Yeah. He did everything except wrestling. And, and over the years, over the next, what, twenty-six years? Is that twenty-six years? I did go to Wasatch High School for math. So twenty-six years. He coached a lot of, of those sports. And I, when, when Superintendent Sweb called me this afternoon to see if I would say a few things, I texted my sister Lori, who is in Disneyland right now, and my brother Steve, who lives in Washington State, said, "What do you want me to say?" And Lori said the same thing that we all thought. My dad was a passionate coach. And he was a smart coach. And he was a loving coach. He, one experience, my dad, when, when they went to away track meets or away basketball games, you would see him walking the streets of whatever town he was in, strategizing that meet or that game or whatever. And mom made the comment, told us tonight that she was sitting in the stands of an away game, this was a basketball game, at one point. And there were some people around her that said, you know, when Verl Tolly gets that look in his eye, there's nobody that can beat him. And that's kind of how the coach, how he was. He was very strategic. He loved his athletes. He loved them dearly and, and wanted them to succeed. And so he pushed them or encouraged them to be the kind of athletes that they could be proud of themselves, but also the school could be proud. And if they wanted to move on to a collegiate level, he made sure that coaches from colleges got to see his athletes. He was well-loved in the coaching community. He was well-known. We would go to BYU games and he knew all the coaches. And he, we got to, we had some great experiences because we got to be in dugouts and locker rooms and stuff because the, the other coaches knew him. My dad was also a referee, so he knew all of the refs and had great association with everybody. And it just was a great experience to, to grow up with him. One, one quick experience, personal experience, when I was a senior in high school, he became the, the girls' basketball coach. And I was really worried because I knew my dad would cut me from the team. And just because he, he did not want to show favoritism. He was a driver's ed teacher. He would not teach, he would not teach us how to drive. Because he didn't want anybody, any kind of show of favoritism at all. And so tryouts went and I was one hundred percent, percent sure that my senior year in high school, my dad would cut me from the girls' basketball team. And he came into my, knocked on my door really late one night and after tryouts. And he said, "Hey, can I talk to you?" And I was like, oh, here it comes. Great. And I, he didn't turn on the light, which was another thing. He just came in and sat on the side of my bed. And he put his, put his hand on my knee and he said, "I'm not gonna cut you." And I was like, mm, okay. So now you're still here, so you've got more things to say to me. And he said, "But I want you to know, you're gonna work, have to work just as hard as every other one of my athletes to get, to get time to play. And if you, if you work hard, then you'll play." And that's what his whole thing was. He didn't care if you were the best. He didn't care if you were the worst. But he cared if you worked hard as an athlete. And he would help you to be the very best that you could be as an athlete. And that is pretty rare in coaching. He never was negative in his coaching. He never used negative tactics. He was always very positive, helping you to succeed. He knew the, the athletes, the, the track, different athletes, and he knew how to beat them. He knew how your, his relay team, his relay team could beat the, the other relay, relay team. He studied it. He knew it. And he coached you to be the very best that you could be. You guys have anything else to add? Oh, well, yeah, let's talk about that since we're here. So when we came, when we came to Heber, the mom said that, that there was no track at the high school. And the track was a cinder track down at the old fairgrounds.
I think I still have one of those cinders in my knee.
Yeah, exactly. And then at the high school, it became a gravel track. And that was not acceptable to dad because he, you could not have home track meets. We had to go away for every track meet. And he worked really, really hard to get that new rubberized track in. And we have pictures of him helping to lay the track. And he, I think he wrote for grants. I think he helped get the funding. He did what he needed to do to get that new track so that we could have home track meets. And that's really when the track program started to take off, is when we had that, those facilities to help athletes be better. Oh, Wendy's mouthing me. So we had, after my dad, in, in nineteen ninety, my dad fell off his roof and had a pretty significant head injury. And, but he still loved track. And he would take the grandkids when they were just tiny. And we would go up to the track and he would make us, make the kids have track meets. And they would, he signed them up. He had them race. He had them all written down. He knew which kid, which grandkid was gonna run what race and what they were gonna do and how they were gonna do it. And he still loved that. And later on, a few years after his accident, he had a tendency to get overwhelmed with his head injury. And he would take off. And the first place we started, we found out really, really quickly that the first place that we needed to look was the track. That's where he went. Because that was his home and that's what he knew. And so thank you. This is a really, really great honor for our, for our family.
John, do you want to make, can you make comments from where you're at? Or would you like to come to the podium, please?
I was lucky enough to get to coach with Verl. In fact, I did a lot of things with Verl. He and I worked night security over Deer Valley together. And when he fell and got hurt, I took his place as a driver's ed teacher. He helped me, he and Ron helped me get that done. So, Verl, I'm sorry, is a great friend. When you talk about him as a coach, we'd go down to the state track meets at BYU. And once you get to the state track meet, there's not a lot of coaching you can do. It's, it's done by that point. But not for Verl. He'd sit up in the top of the stands with a notepad and he would figure out where each kid had to finish for us to win the state championship. And we'd, we'd be about halfway through the, the, the meet and he'd say, "We got it. We got this thing." But he, he, he just was, he was so knowledgeable about his kids, what they could do. Great, great, great man, great friend. I think for those of you that were lucky enough to be in school when he was there, those are rare opportunities that happen. We, we sometimes are just lucky to run into people like Verl Tolly. So for me personally, I love this. Dan Wright, Ron Tree, Verl Tolly, three great friends who touched so many kids' lives. I'm sorry, didn't think I'd get emotional or I wouldn't volunteer, but I, I really did love every moment I spent with Verl. Those long nights over at Deer Valley were awful, but they were okay if you were with Verl. He made it so that it was, it was bearable. But I, I love the man. I love the, the idea of what you've done. So thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. I could tell you of Verl Tolly's story, but I'm not gonna top that one. So we'll save that for another time. But thanks again, John. We have a couple more items we need to take care of tonight. So I will...
Did you guys want to get a picture first?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay. Then we'll do the boring stuff. You guys want to come up and we can get a picture with your family?
Is there a place to put this picture by?
I think that's Mr. Sweat.
Who's holding the flag?
Robert's son, Duncan.
Well, did Midway kids come?
Amy Carter.
Was it kindergarten?
Kindergarten. In eighty-two, this became... Um, I'm not sure. This is Dr. Salazar's son. And this is the Sweat. Okay, Erin. Erin Sweat. I think it's, and I get, this little Sweat girl moved to Cash Valley at the end of kindergarten. And she and Wendy's oldest daughter became best friends.
One of them was your mother goose, Lunter.
Oh, okay. Everything in here is all the stuff that was in my room except the vase. And the plant was in a gallon milk jug that a mother had made for me that had a plant in. And Robert said, "I couldn't put the bees in." So he made a vase. But this was to replace the old potbelly stove that, that I remember. Maybe some of you have seen the picture of the kids holding the flag with the potbelly stove. But Robert called one night and said, "Can I bring some kids, Collins' friends?" Of course, we were all, you know, one kindergarten school. And anyway, Washington DC had commissioned him to paint an update of the old potbelly stove. So he came in. And this is my classroom. This bell sits under my pitcher hanging above my fireplace in my home. That's my school bell. And this was a napkin holder that, I can't remember his name now, his dad taught at the high school. Anyway, he made me a napkin holder one weekend and Robert.
Well, we look forward to a great celebration this spring. Just discussing with Superintendent, I actually went to North School kindergarten in first grade here. Not in this classroom. I was in the wing that shot out. You remember that?
Yes.
Had the same teacher. Not to go off on a tangent, but I, I didn't like my kindergarten teacher. She was, she was mean. No, we won't mention any names. I helped move her into the care center about six months ago. And then I had the privilege of having her again in first grade. And she was still mean. I probably did, Sean. Okay, we're gonna continue on. Dr. Watt is gonna make some changes tonight, so.
Well, a year ago, the school board asked President Hanson to continue and, and elected him to continue another term of president. The, he had led the board through some really difficult decisions. And in an effort to sort of see that through, they, you thought it important that he continue that leadership. And now as he sort of ends his time on the board, he's elected to, to step down from his role as board president. He's, he has been instrumental in a lot of decisions and that you guys have made that will, that will last forever, really. The, the school that's being built over on Midway Lane being just, just one example of that. And so with that, then Vice President Cory Holmes will also step down from his role as vice president. And I'll now conduct a, a, a order of business to elect a new president and vice president for the, for the board. And so, any board member can be the board president and the board, board vice president. You can nominate yourself or you can nominate somebody else. And so I'd, I'd entertain a motion on nomination, or not a motion, a nomination for board president.
I would like to nominate Tyler Bluth for our board president.
Okay, is there a second to that nomination?
A second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Tyler Bluth being the Wasatch County School District Board of Education President? And this will be to finish the, this current year out, the, the, the term of, of President Hanson's time. This, this two-year term, so it'll be the rest of this year, at which time then, uh, of the board as it exists in January, we'll, we'll conduct this business again. All in favor of Tyler Bluth, say aye.
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 Okay. Welcome, President Bluth.
Thank you.
Would now entertain a nomination for a vice president.
I nominate Kim Dickerson.
Are there any other, oh, second, thank you Tyler. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. We'll close nominations and proceed to vote. All in favor of Kim Dickerson as vice president?
I know those grandkids are calling a little bit more, but I appreciate your service and your leadership as well, and I'm looking forward to Tyler and Kim.
We learned yesterday we have one more coming.
You do? Congratulations, you guys. That's awesome.
Well, I will echo that as well. I, Tom's been a great leader and quite honestly, I think you have all been great leaders, so just appreciate being able to work with you.
Thank you. Well, I look forward to, we look forward to Tyler and, and Kim leading us this next year and we'll be great followers, won't we, Mary Ann?
Yes, we will.
Okay, board report, anyone need to report on anything?
I can start off.
Go ahead.
I'm sure you do.
I was gonna say legislative session is going. So, um, but before that, I do wanna just mention interlocal, cause that's one of my assignments as well. We have an interlocal meeting. And there was a decision made there to start an interlocal regional committee, um, and they are needing two elected officials. I had sent this to, to you guys and just, they would like to know who those are as well, to just address the bypass impacts on, on the community, not to throw anybody off, there's nothing decided. Um, it's not gonna be announced until it's been pushed back to March. It's just this committee, um, of interlocal elected officials is to meet together to see how we can kind of mitigate the impact on Wasatch as a community of this bypass wherever it ends up going. So, two of us will, is, is what they're asking for to serve on that. Um, and then.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Is that in addition to the quote interlocal meeting?
Yes.
It'll be like an interlocal committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, and it's just two elected officials from each entity in the valley, just to have.
I'd like to be on that.
All right.
We'll, we'll decide.
Yeah, cool. Um, and then just kinda going off of that as well, just a shout out to WPN, our Wasatch Parent Network. I know at Daniels Canyon, we had our literacy night yesterday. It was amazing, hundreds of people with their kids and so much work went into that. And having the library there and you could get your library card to the public library there, it was so cool. It was awesome, it was such a great night. And I know we have so many parents at all of our schools doing that, so I just appreciate that. And then JLC, Joint Legislative Committee, um, it's underway. Please just keep on top of your emails, I've sent out a couple emails. And JLC prep meetings over Zoom on Thursday nights, JLC, everyone's invited to on Fridays. We're taking positions and giving feedback and doing all the things, so should be good. Daniels and Waltsburg, I don't have anything, cause there's no way I could get there this month, but there's an update.
I just wanna start off by saying thank you to Mary Ann, because I know how hard she works with the USBA. She puts in a lot of time and I just, I don't think we ever, we publicly thank you enough. And, and it's an elected position, she's not really volunteering to do this. They keep electing her, cause she's doing such a great job and she represents four school districts. And we, Wasatch County School District is lucky to have her.
Thanks.
On the board, cause we get, I think, even better direct communication, direct information on what's going on. She keeps us up to date with what's, with what's happening down at, on the hill and so we appreciate your service in that. Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Um, I just have a couple things. So, uh, we were invited to Tempanogus Middle School to have lunch with the teachers. We get invited every year and it's probably one of my most favorite things to do, to be in the schools. And, um, so Tyler, Mary Ann and I were able to go and we interacted with the teachers and just had a lot of fun. And somehow the, the students pulled us into, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Some kind of video.
Their video announcements.
They were doing announcements and they wanted us to do a little video saying that we're the school board, so here it is.
Oh, you have it?
You have the whole video? Sweet, nice.
We're gonna show it.
I haven't even seen it.
I haven't either.
One time, the school board walked past me. It was amazing.
The school board is flawless. Yeah, the school board makes all the rules.
They're the bomb dot com.
They literally rule the school, including me.
The school board is totally tubular.
They are so cool.
They even help me learn when I'm sick. Ah ha, ah ha.
The school board totally rocks, man.
We're the school board.
Good job, little team. We, we can have fun too. So, thank you. Oh, one more thing, um, I, this is just something for the board, but I, I met with Director Johnson and he got me up to date on this pilot program that we're doing for math. And, um, I hope in the future sometime Superintendent Sweat, that maybe he can come present to us and show us what's going on.
That'd be great.
With the math pilot program, so.
Anything else?
No, that's great.
Superintendent.
Um, I just have one little, uh, celebration to take care of. Um, and I shouldn't say little, it is, it is, um, a big deal. And I have a, I have a plaque here sent to us from, uh, the, the magazine, US News and World Report. And they do, they do some, uh, they do public school rankings each year. Um, they do state by state and, and some national things and, and, uh, we, we know that, uh, Wasatch County School District has made some great strides in achievement in recent years. And, uh, we wanna, we wanna honor specifically because we have this plaque that we need to award. We wanna honor one of our schools tonight and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about a few, uh, other, some other schools. But, um, this, this plaque is for Old Mill Elementary. And, uh, it's, it's a plaque that says best elementary schools, public twenty twenty-four, US News and World Report, um, recognized as one of the best elementary schools by US News. Um, so if you look a little closer into where this, where this, uh, ranking is, um, I just looked it up while we were during our meeting, there are seven hundred and forty-nine elementary, public elementary schools, um, in the state of Utah. And there's, there's about fifty, um, private. And of those, of those seven hundred and fifty-plus elementary schools, based on certain achievement metrics and, and some other things that they include, um, this, coming from a third party, a national organization, um, Old Mill Elementary is ranked fifth out of eight, almost eight hundred schools in the state of Utah. Let's have a big round of applause. I'm gonna present this to Old Mill's principal. And, uh, um, Mrs. Laney is, uh, is our, is our current principal at Old Mill Elementary. And she's a very athletic.
Dancer.
She, uh, she was probably on the black slope when she, uh, is that, that's the hardest one, right? She was probably on the black slopes when she, uh, hurt her knee skiing.
Can I have that too?
And, uh, so, yeah. So we'll go ahead and get a, and get a picture with, with Laney and we're gonna, we're gonna let her take this. Hold on just a, just a moment.
We're just getting, we're getting out of the background.
So, and I'm gonna tell you that Laney keeps whispering in my ear and I just told her, trust me, I'm going to do this, but we would be remiss if we didn't invite the, the director of elementary and Steph Dishar to come up and enjoy in this, in this moment. She has been the principal of Old Mill Elementary for how many years until this year, Steph?
Eight years.
Eight years. So she's had a lot to do with this, she's a tremendous leader. Um, I, I say with every confidence that Steph Dishar is, is one of the best principals in this country. And, uh, we all learn from her and, and she's a great leader. And I'd like her to come up and get a picture.
That'd be awesome. I look like I'm popping this leg. That's pretty awesome.
We'll, we'll, we'll take this and we'll.
Thank you. That's probably an idea, so, thank you very, very much.
I might mention that, uh, yeah. I might mention that all of our elementary schools, um, fared very well in this report. In fact, Midway Elementary was, was close behind and, uh, I think they're right near the top twenty. Um, they, they, they didn't send us a plaque, but we'll kind of recognize them in other ways. And then all of our elementary schools are, are, uh, um, in a very good position on that list. And so we, we give a shout out to, to all of our schools, um, but specifically to, to Old Mill tonight, so. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, just make a comment or two before we close, so I have been on the school board for six years and four months. I have thirty-five more months to go and it's, it's a good time, so. I've sat in many of these meetings and oftentimes my wife probably wonders what we do and she came tonight for her first time. So I wanna know what you think of a school board meeting.
Come up to the podium.
Come up to the podium. Please state your name and your address. And you have two minutes.
I just, I just lo, I just liked being here. It was fun, it was interesting, I'm glad I came. I really was just curious to see what happens and I probably should've been more supportive prior now. But I also just wanna say, because, I picked a good night to come, because the Tullys, I grew up right next to the Tullys and they've been lifelong friends and mentors and I just love them. And I don't wanna get emotional, so I'm not going there. But I think my dad was the first one there when Verle fell and my parents and Verle and Colleen have been friends for many, many, many years and so send Christmas cards. I saw one in the mail this year, I get, I collect their mail and they got a card from Colleen, so. Anyway, and I am a Wasatch High School alumni and back in the eighties, like Paul was talking about, and go Wasatch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come again, Marcia. Come again.
I'm getting Laney, but I think she's already gone.
On that note, I'll adjourn this meeting.